Okay. Okay, 5:00, I think it's time to start our study session. I'm gonna ask Jessica to call the roll, please.
Okay. Commissioner Blevins?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Saragusa? Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings?
Here.
Commissioner Orr?
Here.
Mayor Mason?
Here. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda. Item number three, study items. 3.1, recognize city employees for the win and float in the Enid Light Up the Plains Parade. I think we actually have a video, don't we?
Yeah, let's watch the video and then we'll call all the employees up who put together the the number one float in the city's parade and-
Are those elves, the same guys that are sitting right over here?
I think so. I think so.
Seeing, okay.
They're just in different uniforms.
It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Everywhere you go. Take a look at the fire can. It's blessing them once again. Candy canes and silver wings that glow. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Tall as ever in store. But the prettiest sight to see is the holiday movie on your own front door. Okay?
Well, Ashley and Karen, the rest of the crew, fall out. So maybe you can come over here. Harley, you're back.
Yes, I did.
Yes. Well, hey, this is a great example of how many things get done, many good things get done at the city of Enid. And nobody told these guys to to put together a float. I didn't even think we were doing a float this year. And next thing I know, I I hear that we have a float and, of course, you guys did it first class because you won. You you won the parade, the Lights Up the Plains Parade. So I just want to thank you for your initiative. Thank you for your willingness to do more for the people here in Enid than just come to work and do your jobs. You like to do fun stuff, you like to do stuff like Lights Up the Plains, celebrate Christmas. So I thought, Ashley, why don't you go ahead and say a few words? Because most of the folks here are in your department.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. These gentlemen and ladies here really, I guess, knocked it out of the park this year. Karen and Faith helped a lot with the decorations. And this is the first year that we really had my crew kind of get involved and step up and really want to be a part of something bigger than what we are. So I appreciate every one of them. It took a lot of work and a lot of effort. I think Karen and I started what, we started planning it in like August. Started actually working on it in September. So we worked on it here and there, little by little, and just conquered it. So I really do appreciate everything. Thank you.
Karen, why don't you say a few words about an upcoming event? Don't we have an upcoming event? Just go ahead and advertise.
Saturday is our Christmas in the Park. It is our fifth one for COVID. We did a drive-through. We're back to being in person, putting smiles on everybody's faces. That human contact is something we really missed. So we're doing that again this year. It's this Saturday from 5 to 9. We extended it a whole nother hour. So I hope everybody can come out and join us. Lots of activities. The train rides will be open, hot chocolates, smores. It's free. Of course, Santa will be there.
All right. I want to, again, thank all the employees. I also want to thank the Parks Department and a bunch of other folks who decorated Cadillac Park. So these are the folks that did the, they've done both, a lot of it. And they're also the folks that lay down the asphalt in town. So let's give them a round of applause.
Hey, Gerald.
Yes, sir.
But before we finish up, I just wanted to say thank you so much. Those are such small things that mean a lot to a lot of people in town. I sat there, I got to be in that parade, I got to watch all those kids as we went through. They love that stuff. So thank you, thank you so much for taking the time to do that. We appreciate it. You guys work tirelessly to make our lives better. But it's those little things that are just so much fun. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Okay, item 3.2, discuss metropolitan planning, planning and organization designation agreement.
Yeah, I'll talk about that a little bit and I'll call up Sarah McElroy from ODOT and you can introduce your team. And we've been talking about the MPO for, since about at least March or April, maybe longer. I I don't know. But we we believe, we've talked about it a couple times in study sessions. I think you've seen the designation agreement which is on this. I asked ODOT, and I think I mentioned last time, they would be able to be here today to talk about it, answer your questions. I think it's going the way that the city would like it to go. And so we've got the experts here. And anyway, so Sarah?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. My name is Sarah McElroy. I'm with the ODOT Planning Branch. Today I've got with me Laura Chaney. She is the ODOT Planning Branch Manager. And then Mr. Isaac Akim from the Federal Highway Administration. So as Gerald said, we brought this to the study session before. I think it was even here last month. And he kind of briefly went over the presentation, the agreement, and then kind of just a tentative schedule of events to get the MPO up and running. So today, we're just here to answer any questions that you guys might have. If there's any lingering questions, we're here. So if you guys have any questions-
Can we go ahead and pull up? I think, I think we have a designation agreement. Is it not there somewhere? It's on the regular agenda, I think, if you don't mind pulling it up. We might go over that briefly just quickly and-
Okay.
I know you guys have seen it.
Yeah.
But we'll show the makeup. So there'll be, I believe, the mayor and a couple of commissioners serve on that as well as some, you can see the list of other people.
Yes. So the, the agreement, the-
It's in the consent section, I think.
8.5.
It'd be the designation agreement. Can you open that link?
Yeah, the first one. There we go.
If you scroll down, Sarah, do you want to talk them through that?
Yeah, so on number six, we have included the, what will make up the policy board. And the intent of that is to have really a multimodal kind of of structure that's made up of local officials in the area. So as you see, we've got the mayor on there, city council, the town of North Enid, county commissioners, and then representation from ODOT. And then we have Aviation Advisory Board, public transit, as well as a representative from Vance Air Force Base that will make up the policy board. And that is going to be the, the MPO that will designate, excuse me, the MPO will have, the policy board is going to be the the decision maker. So these people from these entities will make up the policy board that's going to be voting on the items. And then non-voting members we have on there as well, people from ODOT Local Government, representative from NODA, FHWA, FTA, and then some House of Representatives and state senators if they they wish to attend. Is there anything else in the agreement that you wanted to hit on, Gerald?
No, I think we might talk briefly about the schedule ahead, presuming that the commissioner will consider this tonight and presumably approve it. What's the next steps after that?
Yeah, so if we'll scroll down to, I think the schedule is on the last page of this. There's the boundary. Yeah. Might have to zoom out a little bit. But this is just kind of a tentative schedule with key deliverables that have to be in place by certain dates before we can move to the next steps. So the designation needs to be in place by December 29th. And then a website created, which that will be, that will be updated continuously. Hire MPO staff, apply for an NEI number, which is a federal ID number. Meeting dates, and then we'll also have, there'll be several MOUs between ODOT, public transit, the city of Enid. Most importantly, probably the, the major next steps will be the UPWP, which is a unified working plan, which is going to outline what the MPO is going to do in a federal fiscal year. And then we'll also have the PL agreement, which will be the planning funds that will be available. So I think this schedule, there's another page that takes us all the way out to like 2026. And then these are the federally required documents as well. So this is just kind of a rough draft to kind of see where we are and where we need to be. And we will update this schedule as things advance, so.
So I've got just a couple of questions. You guys had come right before I'd come on as mayor. So I was able to sit down the audience, but not necessarily ask questions. So can you give me some examples of the decisions that that we're going to be making on this? And how it will affect Enid?
Okay.
And then I've got a follow-up question to that afterwards.
Yeah, so the policy board is really going to be approving planning documents. That unified working plan that I talked about, what the MPO is going to be doing in within a year's timeframe, they're going to approve that document. I believe in, is it 2026? The Transportation Improvement Program, that's going to be a listing of all of the projects in the area. That will be something that comes up for approval. It's not approving or denying projects. It's going to be, the city of Enid has these projects. County commissioners have these projects, ODOT. Oops, sorry. It's going to be all included in one unified document. That way, everybody can see what everybody's working on. And it's really to kind of marry everybody together.
Yeah, it's not to deny anything that the city of Enid wants to do, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Or the town of North Enid.
Exactly.
It's just to unify and to become one kind of transportation planning organization.
Okay, so we don't duplicate some items?
Exactly. Yes. Yeah.
And it's also my understanding, just so I'm clear, that I know we had the option of joining NORDA? Did I say that right?
NORPO?
Yes.
Or NODA?
NODA, NODA.
Yes.
Putting R in there, doesn't it?
That's okay.
NODA. We, because of our size and having our own engineering department, and I know that some other communities have done this around the state, but we did not hurt ourselves in any way, right? By choosing to do our own standalone organization. Is that right?
We, we talked with Gerald a little bit and he had asked about Lawton's model because it's, it's a very similar size and it's really just the city of Lawton that the MPO encompasses. So we, that is the model that we presented. And that is what we have kind of structured this MPO around, is how Lawton has done their MPO for the last however many years.
Which has worked well for them, right?
Yes. Yes.
I would note, too, that it still includes those entities you mentioned before. Garfield County-
Yes.
-are involved, North Enid's involved, District 4, NODA is involved.
So- Yes.
It, it, just the key difference with the Lawton model, for me anyway, was it was, it was driven by the city rather than a different entity. But it's still a separate entity for all of the entities' planning functions in that designated-
It's really just housed there. That would be-
Better way of saying it.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I just know we kicked this around for a long time and looked at it from every angle and just wanted to hear from you that our decision is one that still gives us a lot of autonomy, right?
Yes, yeah. Like I said, Lawton is housed at the city, but they, they operate as two separate entities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this meant to take any way, anything away from the MAPC?
No.
Okay. So what's kind of the relationship between this and MAPC going to be?
I'm not sure there is a relation, there, there isn't a relationship. This is a standalone entity that's focused on planning, but I will let you-
That's our Metropolitan Area Planning Committee?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I can say something-
Yeah, please come on up.
You need to speak now, sir.
But like other communities have those planning commissions, it is a help to the MPO because when you come to talking about land use, planning, and things like those, those are things that support travel in the area. If you know where all the homes are, where the businesses are, and you can come up with plans for how to move people one, one place to another. And so they work hand in hand with the MPOs. MPO will be focused on trying to develop transportation facilities in the area. And as a part of that, they are going to be relying on where the traffic is coming from, where the travel is coming from, where the trouble is heading. And the planning commission usually has a very good handle on how those things come together.
Okay.
And they work hand in hand.
So you guys won't be making decisions about rezoning parts of the county or anything?
No, that, that is the province of the MAP-
MAPC, okay.
-information, yes.
So I need to know. Thank you.
It, it does incorporate, I think you called it a, you called it a multimodal group because it's not just focused on roads for driving. It's focused on airports, transit, I'm assuming trails, bicycles, all those kind of things that we may not think of as all transportation. I know sometimes I just think streets and bridges, but it's, it is that, but it's more.
How, how people are moving around and how to make it more efficient, more effective, and make people go to work to wherever their destinations are. Make it, make it, the city of Enid is already doing that. But with the MPO, you're having access to federal funds. After you, you develop your plan, they want to see that you develop a long-range plan, have a short-range plan. And Sarah talked about a work program, which is the essence of where the funding is. Talking about the staffing and things that you need in order to develop those plans. So once you are able to do that, you develop the plan, then you, you are able to access some federal funds. In fact, I think Sarah has mentioned, the, the funding that you, you receive here will be contingent upon your development of those, what we call planning products, the TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Program, the Long Range Plan. And so it's, but obviously working with Florida.
Can, can you elaborate on that just a little bit more? You said the amount of our funding that we receive depends on what?
No, I'm saying that as a part of this, this funds that you receive from the planning funds. And then ODOT usually develops the statewide Transportation Improvement Program. When they are doing that, they call upon all the MPOs like you are going to have to come up with their own set of priorities in terms of projects. And then you have to work with ODOT to come up with what projects are eminent or have the highest priority in this area. And those will be ones which they will recommend for inclusion in the, you, you will recommend for inclusion in your TIP and therefore also recommend for inclusion in the statewide Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay.
But as you go along, I'm sure Sarah and Laura and I will be available if there are any issues that come up with any things to do with the project. It doesn't affect your funding from ODOT, you know, so you still have that priority, that prerogative to pursue funding under ODOT. And I think the district engineer will be working with you. District engineer for this area will obviously will be here, work in the committee, making, helping you. The district engineer always makes decisions about which, what are priorities for his region. So that will be his on the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to just a couple, clarify a couple more things, just so everybody. It says it in the designation agreement, Sarah may have already said it. The reason, probably the main reason we're doing this is we're required to do it. Federal government requires us because we hit a certain level, over 50,000. So I think we may have had one of these in the past, but it's been a long, long time ago. And, and so, plus the laws and things have changed in regards, as transportation has progressed. So it is exciting to, to get this thing set up. And it looks like the schedule over the next six months, getting all these work products put together. So I imagine there will be monthly meetings or as needed. But at some point, when you get into steady state operations or whatever we call it, it'll probably, it might go down to less than monthly, right? What's your vision, how often do?
We will probably, I mean, we'll definitely be in touch with you, Gerald, and others as the MPO is being set up. As far as the, the technical committee meetings and the policy board meetings, those are probably going to be monthly for the foreseeable future. It's possible that they do get bumped down quarterly. We do quarterly meetings with our by-state MPO that serves the Fort Smith area. So it's Oklahoma and then the Fort Smith, Arkansas area. They do quarterly meetings. So it's a possibility, but I would recommend monthly meetings for now.
There is a separate budget of some size for the planning for, for the MPO, but that's part of what we get into with going through the process, right?
Correct, yes. There are some federally required documents that have to be put together first before those, those planning funds will be made available.
We'll end up hiring an employee-
Yes.
-at some point fairly soon, looking at the schedule-
Yeah.
-to focus solely on the MPO.
Correct.
And then there'll probably be other people that will contribute a certain amount of time as needed.
Yes. Yes.
What's exciting, if you guys don't have any other questions, they may or may not hang around a long time. So they've got to go back to Oklahoma City. So I wanted to make sure if you do have any questions, the agreement we've looked at, it's on the consent agenda. It'd be a good time to get them answered by the experts.
Any other questions, comments?
Transportation is a very complicated process for the state of Oklahoma, probably most states, so.
And I do think we took our time and really looked at this. I mean-
I think we did some due diligence, yes.
I, I do too. I do too. And I'm, I'm glad we opted to go the direction that we did. So anyway, if there are no other questions, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having us.
And I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of each other moving forward.
Yes. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
The A-team is leaving the building.
Okay. Item 3.3, discuss status of homeless shelters in Enid. Jeremiah, I think that's, you, thank you for being here.
Jeremiah has talked to several of you guys over the years. And I know he reached out to me probably a week or two ago. I think he talked to a couple of you. And this turned out to be a good opportunity to talk a little bit about homeless shelters. And thank you for coming tonight on short notice.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. And I want to start off with telling you guys thanks for some funding you gave to help us replace some air conditioners and heaters and some of our facility, for facilities. So we really appreciate that, it's keeping us warm this winter season. But yeah, I was talking to Commissioner Norwood and Saragusa, just kind of just updating them consistently with different projects that we got going on around Enid, with some, some construction projects and yard cleanups and just a consistent communication with those guys. And, and we started talking one day just about, you know, updating you guys about the homeless situation that's going on in Enid. And, you know, we're only one entity that plays a part in trying to help with the needs of what's going on in the homeless community. And with our homeless shelter opening up a couple, a few weeks ago, we thought maybe it'd just be good to kind of just update you guys on where we're at, what's going on. And, and, you know, really, the reason the Mercy House started was when Sarah and I moved to Enid about 15 years ago, one of our, our desires or goals was to, you know, kind of go door to door, creek to creek, bridge to bridge, and just kind of find all the needs that were going on in Enid. And, and whatever that was, whether it was someone that needed a handicap- And, and whatever that was, whether it was someone that needed a handicap ramp or a house that needed to be painted, or there was a family that needed clothes or some food. You know, our, our desire was to try to find some churches to help partner with that, to help meet those needs. And, you know, how could we meet physical needs in the midst of offering spiritual needs? And, and in the midst of that, we uncovered all kinds of different things that we weren't expecting, especially, you know, just being in Enid, Oklahoma, growing up in this area. And, and as we met those needs, the, the beautiful thing about it was we got to partner with several different groups of people that was willing to meet those needs and, and help people through hard times. And so this will be the ninth year that we have opened the Mercy House. The Mercy House came about, we really had no intentions of opening an emergency homeless shelter. But when we were in the midst of building our big facility out in the Southern Heights neighborhood, it was going to be used for some offices and mainly storage. One of the things that we had uncovered in the midst of the feeding programs and clothing programs and the different things we were doing in the community is that there was quite a few homeless in Enid at the time. And working with Salvation and talking through them with some of the, the restrictions they had with the rules, there was some people that weren't able to stay in their shelter, whether they didn't have an ID or there was some, they were drinking or different things. And, and we just felt like maybe we need to open kind of as a emergency shelter in extreme weather conditions. And so when we started to talk about that, we came to you guys nine years ago and talked about how we thought we might be able to help with that when those conditions came around. And I think the board voted that unanimous, that they were in favor of us opening that shelter. And so our shelter has ran about 95% with volunteers. So we've had churches from as far as 100 miles drive into Enid. We've had churches and businesses work in the shelter here in Enid. And they really have been able and willing to come out and cook dinner and wash clothes and fold clothes and, and provide those types of physical needs for people that have stayed at the Mercy House. The thing that's kind of been shocking in the last few years is when we first opened our shelter nine years ago, we ran about 90 some people our first year, which was a lot of long nights of a lot of laundry to clean. It was a whole lot of people there, a whole lot of food that was going on. We were working with Salvation Army that was running probably close to 50 or 60 people at the time. So there was a large demographic that we uncovered. And in the midst of that, we started to ask while we were opening the shelter, well, what is it that we can do with working with other organizations like Hope Outreach and Salvation Army to help people to transition off the streets and help them to get into an apartment or get a job back? And as you guys probably know, there has been quite a few transitional programs that have popped up over the years. I know Hope Outreach, Hope Outreach runs one. Obviously, there's quite a different ones that have, have popped up and started to help people from transitioning. And so the last few years, our numbers have started to dramatically decrease to a point where it's like we're starting to ask the question, is the Mercy House still needed? And so I'll give you an example. A couple of years ago, if you guys remember, when we had the extremely cold season where it was in the negatives for a long period of time, the average, the average number of people that was staying at Salvation Army and with the Mercy House was between 56 and 60 people. And so again, running 90 in ours and 50, 60 in theirs nine years ago, to now run 55 to 60 people, the number has dramatically started to drop off in the last few years. We opened our shelter around two weeks ago. And this season, Salvation Army, and again, I'm not a Salvation Army spokesman. I've just, I've talked to David, the guy that runs it. And we, we're in communication quite a bit just with people that are going back and forth and trying to figure out how to help them. But David has been running between 24 and 30 people. And this season, we have opened up with only seven people. And so again, that number has decreased dramatically. Now, if you want me to explain exactly why that is, there's a thousand different reasons maybe why that is. I think a lot of it is due to the, the different organizations in Enid that are trying to help people to transition off the streets. I think it has to do with some of the transitional programs. And again, that population or people group is a transient. So some of them come in and out once they're passing through Enid. And so, you know, so, you know, as we begin this season, we're excited to see, you know, how God works and moves through the people that come in. But I think it is something that I would like for you guys to start talking about. If the commissioners are out of place, but they don't feel like maybe the Mercy House is needed and that maybe Salvation Army can handle this need and we could talk with David and sit down and discuss this more, that that's something that we're willing to back away from if that's, if that's something that you guys would feel like at this point is not needed. Again, we opened it because we wanted to be a service to the people of Enid. We wanted to be able to give churches an outlet to help serve people. And we wanted to make Enid a better place. And so that's the reason we're still willing to do that seven days a week. And I can promise you, my team works endless hours to, to keep that going, to help people that are in need. And so anyway, so that's one of the reasons, if you guys have any questions, I definitely, my wife wanted me to iterate this, a rumor, I'm going to squash this rumor just so that if anyone has this opinion, they can, they can ask this question. We have never and will never import homeless people to Enid. I know that has been a rumor that has been spread by several different groups that we have imported homeless people into Enid, and that's why the number has increased. That is actually not the case. It's actually quite the opposite. Because of the shelters and the transitional programs, that number has only decreased. And so anyways, I'll be, glory to God, he's the one that's done it all. But if you guys have any questions about that, I'll try to answer it at least best as I can from our perspective or the things that we, we deal with.
Jeremiah, I tabled a deal last week, last commission about the parks. And one of the reasons why I tabled that was because of Don Haskins Park. You hold an outreach there, SOS holds an outreach there. How many people did you service two weeks ago on Tuesday night?
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so we've been doing the park outreach for about 13 years. And really, you know, that's not necessarily catering to homeless people, it's just people in need. And so we're able to give out clothes. I would say in the last 13 years of that ministry, we've given out almost over a million outfits to kids that don't have clothes, to people that don't have pants. I mean, I could go on and on with stories. And then we feed them. And so a couple of weeks ago, we had over 200 people down there. We were able to give out over, I think it was somewhere around 20, 25 turkeys. We did a drawing. And then we had some churches that partnered and they cooked a big Thanksgiving meal. Several of the people came down and said, thank you, because that, they weren't going to eat Thanksgiving meals this year. And so, you know, that park has really helped us to connect with the community.
Did you happen to get out of there before it got dark?
I don't know if we started before it got dark with the time change. It was, you know, already dark.
Well, that's why I asked for that particular ordinance to be changed before we take it back into consideration. Because of the work that you do, that SOS does at Don Haskins Park has helped a lot of my constituents in my ward, since that's where that park is located at. And I knew the numbers from you that night and everything, and that's, keep that one up. That one's helping a lot of people in my, in my ward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's a blessing. It's been, it's been really good. And I could go on for stories for hours, but I don't know how much time I've got. Any other questions you guys have?
Well, I'd like to make a comment. Personally, I'd just like to thank you and your wife Sarah and Brandon and Peggy and everyone else that runs your organization. One thing I do like is where you're going, your vision moving forward with the tiny homes. I think that's really going to help our community. And I believe we got the part of it taken care of.
Oh, we're on the same page, we're good now, yeah.
So we, we need to take care of that, but that's a great thing. And also, United Way, Dan Shidel, we've talked together. And, and I went down the code and spoke with Scott. And I have a list of violations. And as me and Brandon and yourself have discussed, we're going to help the city of Enid by eliminating the code violations.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to be out there with you guys, helping.
Right.
Painting, whatever we got to do to help beautify Enid.
Absolutely.
That's what we're going to do together.
Right.
So personally, I just want to thank you all. And I'm just glad that Gerald allowed the code department to allow us to be able to help the city of Enid. And United Way with Dan Shidel, they're going to team up with us. Because we do the Day of Kindness. But we're going to keep doing the Day of Kindness throughout the year to help improve and beautify the city of Enid and also bring the quality of life up for those that are unfortunate. So Brandon, Jeremiah, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to help.
Yeah.
Which I've already, I also tapped into that after the Day of Kindness and everything else and had you come into my ward for a couple of things.
Right, you know, one of the things, we got to help an elderly lady in Keys area that needed a back door. And so again, we were able to go there and place it. And so those are the things in any ward, if there's people that you hear about. I mean, obviously, we can, we only got so many hours in a day. But if we can help, we want to be a part of that and, and do what we can to bless people, so. And so if you've never been to the shelter, I definitely want to invite you to come down for a couple hours and just see it being ran. Or if you want to know more about the ministry, we'd love to give you a tour and all the different programs and things that are going on to help people here in Enid. We'd love to have you come out and check it out. So, everyone good?
So Jeremiah, I've got.
Yes.
Couple of questions.
Please.
First of all, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, that's a thankless job sometimes and, and I think sometimes your good doesn't always go recognized. So thank you for doing that. I get a lot of calls on this. And one thing I wanted to ask you is, do you track the folks that come through your, your facility? I mean, are they still here? Have they left? Have they gotten a job? Are they, have they moved on to Woodward or wherever? I mean, tell me what accountability we've got on those folks coming through? Or do we just feed them and shelter them and then they leave on their own?
Right.
And go to the next facility? Tell me what's going on there?
Yeah, so, you know, with, with ours, since we're only a temporary shelter and, you know, so we, right now are functioning at three months of the year. And so we shut down a couple of years ago, the summer time, because we were only getting one or two people in during the summer months. And so again, it didn't seem like there was any reason for us to even open. And so, you know, with the, the roof, Hope Outreach's Day Center and with the Salvation Army, they're able to track that a lot better than we are because they're constantly in that world. Now, on our side, when people come in, you know, our three month window, we're able to get their names, we keep track in a book of who's coming there, where they're from, what's going on, and what their plan is of what, when they, when we shut down the shelter. One of the things that we have seen successful with the, the men in particular is because of our men's transitional program, we have got to see a lot of them transition into the program and then back into a job and a workforce. That's, Brandon's the one that runs that program. And, and so now, some of those people, when they, when our shelter shuts down, they cycle back into the street, back into their camps, back into wherever they kind of stay for that, that off season.
So I guess that's what I'm asking. Those people that you're saying that you're putting in jobs, what, what's the percentage? Are we at 80% of those people in a job now, still in a job, or?
So we have.
What, what's the, I tend to be incel, so I want to see ROI on everything, right? I mean, what's the result of this?
Well, so this is how we judge our results, I'll just tell you how we do it. I mean, our, our, our goal, our mission is to share the gospel with people. So when we have people come into our shelter, or whether it's coming into our program, whether that is, our main goal is to share the gospel with them. The Bible tells us to plant and water seeds. So I can promise you this, we are 100% successful at doing that. Now, what happens after that is a choice. People have a choice to make. Now, I could say eight out of 10 guys get a job, but I can't tell you eight out of 10 guys keep a job because those guys have a choice to make. They have to decide whether they want to keep that job and do the things that it takes to require to be successful. Now, our mission while they're with us is to give them every tool and skill that they need to be successful. So we take them through money management, budgeting classes, live skills, our work program that we run with them for the first month while they're in there is to teach them how to mow a yard, how to start a chainsaw. Yeah, giving them life skills. Some of these guys that we get in are off the streets, they haven't had a job in 40 years. And so the basic things that we take for granted that most people know how to do, brush their teeth, comb their hair, some of these things, they just haven't done in forever. So, so with that being said, what we said, what we have seen is consistency is valuable beyond belief. We're constantly pouring into people to try to help give them the things that they need to be successful. And I think the numbers prove itself. 140, 150 people nine years ago, and now we're down to this 40, 50 margin mark. So where have they all disappeared to? I don't know. I mean, have I kept track of every one of them? No. But have I kept track of handfuls of them? Yes. And I can tell you stories of people that have been reunited with their families. I'll give you an example right now, we have a guy, I won't say his name. He's been in our homeless shelter for seven years. He's been addicted to drugs, he's been addicted to, to alcohol, and he's been addicted to women. He came this year and he wanted to be in the program. I couldn't believe it, I'm like, are you kidding me, seriously? Seven years of pouring into this guy's life, building a relationship, getting to know him, letting him know that he could talk to us about real issues, struggles, trauma that he's endured in his life through sexual abuse, verbal abuse, and the things that a lot of these people go through. But yet, seven years, not giving up on this guy, because there's hope, there's always hope. Without hope, believe me, this would be the worst job ever. But with hope, we didn't give up on this guy. This guy came in the program, he's been there for almost a month. And at the 5,000 feet the other day, his 80-year-old mother and a successful business guy here in town came down to see him. And they said that we had given up on him, we could not believe what has happened in his life right now. It was the first time they seen him sober in almost 30 years of his life. And so where's that guy headed? My hope is that he's going to get a job and he's going to stay sober. And we're going to do everything we can to help him. And so, but unfortunately, there's still that choice that's in play and.
And I think we all hope that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But just last week, I had lunch with a business owner that is having homeless people stay in his building, that he's having to run off, defecation everywhere. I mean, where do their rights come in? I guess is what I'm saying, because.
Absolutely.
And, and why do you think these folks continue to come to Enid? I know your numbers are down. I don't know, I would probably question whether or not the numbers overall are down just from the number of phone calls that I take from downtown business owners.
Right.
And we can't go put them in jail.
Right.
Right? Because, I mean, they're out before the, our PD finishes their, their report. So where are their rights at, is what I'm trying to figure out? Because they're, they're paying rent, they're paying insurance, they're paying overhead. And then they have to go out there and clean that up. And, well, help me understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, so I, I would, I would challenge everyone with, just because they see someone walking through the downtown doesn't necessarily mean they're homeless. And I think so often that we see someone and we kind of judge a book by its cover and think, well, that guy's homeless because he's hanging here, or he's walking through, or he's sitting on a bench. And, you know, what I have found, that there's just a lot of people that are in poverty or that are getting a government check and they have a home that are just in the midst of the day, they're going from A to B to C. And so there's not as many as maybe it would see that there's homeless. And, and so, you know, as a downtown business owner, I have, I face those struggles too, right? I mean, we have homeless people that come into our coffee shop that we love on, that we get to know, that we build relationships. That we face some of those problems, obviously with the defecating too. And so, you know, my.
I, I guess my question is, Jeremiah, because you choose to do that, why does every other business owner have to agree to that?
Well, I don't think that, again, if we chose not to do it, you're going to eliminate homeless people from Enid. I mean, homelessness is a choice. So, okay, let's shut down every program in town, they're still going to be here. They were here before I came. When we started to go out to the bridges and the things, we found them all. 150 people, where, where'd they come from? They were there. Just because one organization starts to do something about it, doesn't mean that it created the problem. It means that they uncovered the problem and instead of doing nothing about it, they started to do something for it. And so I believe by uncovering the problem, now we know it exists. So what are we going to do about it? Ignore it, or do we want to keep on pouring into it?
For the first time, I saw a tent pitched down on our library. And for the first time this morning, I saw a tent pitched out on the district. And I'm just wondering, I've never seen that before.
Right.
I don't know, I don't want to come by there tomorrow after I've talked to our ERDA director about bringing in business and see 100 tents out there. I mean, I'm just being honest on this thing, right? I mean, we also have to try to live in this.
I think it's a, I think. I think it's a, I think it's a problem that several communities are talking about. I mean, you look at the West Coast, you look at some of these big metropolitan areas. I mean, the area I worked in, 300,000 homeless. I mean, what do you do with a problem like that? And so I think it is a growing problem that every city is going to have to figure out what they want to do to help, um, contain that or to help that population grow. And so I think back to the question I'm here to ask you guys. If you see that there is a need for us to be here, which means we're willing to take people in, we're willing to, to spend endless amounts of hours to help them work through the challenges with the hope of helping them to transition off the streets, then we are willing to do that. I promise you, we will stay open. I will open more housing, build more tiny homes, whatever that is. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help with that problem, if you guys are on board with that. But I want to eliminate the, the rumors that because we're helping people, that it's only bringing more people in here to this community. I think the numbers would say that it's got better.
I'll, I'll jump in, Mayor, and just say a few words. I appreciate what you guys are doing. Homelessness is a difficult situation.
It is, absolutely.
Probably until I've been in this position, I, I, everybody's aware of what you say. You see people downtown. If you go to Oklahoma City, you see them under bridges and stuff. Sometimes if you go to Walmart here, you see people with signs. It's a difficult problem. I wish there was a simple solution.
Right.
There isn't. Um, but it is a challenge. And so I know the mayor has been talking, I, I've talked some business, you've talked to business owners. We may look at, if, if there's a group we can get together of folks, including you and some others who are doing things to help. I don't know what the answer is. I know I always tell people, if you have an answer, if there's a magic city ordinance we could pass, please come and tell me.
Right.
I will tell you, one of the, the challenges, anytime a homeless person breaks the law, actually, it could be a person with a home too that breaks the law. I think the guy that busted the Enid Act's window, I don't, I think, I think when you, you dig into that, that person wasn't necessarily homeless. So it's a challenging, challenging effort. I did see the tent at the library too. We made sure that was gone. That's a simple fix. Call the police department and
Right.
Ask them to, or, or call one of the organizations that maybe has some rapport with the folks and tell them they can't camp there. Part of what we're dealing with, and over time, I'm going to bring in some more folks to talk about this.
Right.
You just happen to be the first one. I know I talked to Captain Brittle at Salvation Army. They have the full-time shelter.
Right.
And so they all have perspective on this, but part of, and Matt Loman would be a good one to come and talk at some point. People that, some of the people that are in this condition, homeless or experiencing homelessness, are in that condition because, um, mental illness, drug abuse, all that kind of stuff. But, but, but a shorter way of saying is they don't think like we do.
Right.
You know, so they're not, so if they have a tent and they, it's time to go to bed, they look for a place to pitch a tent. In a civil, civilized society, you just can't be doing that at various places. So I will say this is also, it doesn't make it any better, but I, I look at the headlines, some of you guys do too, of other cities. And I, I see the issues. I see what Shawnee's doing, you know, on some permitting. I see, um, gosh, there was, uh, just in the recent municipal clippings, there was a homeless camp somewhere. I don't know if that was Norman or someplace. So it's a challenging problem. So I think the tents, I know I've appreciated a few times, I've called you about some tents I've seen in town and you quickly corrected the situation. So those kind of situations, we can fix faster than others.
And it is challenges.
But it's a hard problem.
Right. As you get more
It is a hard problem. Jeremiah, I appreciate what you're doing. Don't, don't mistake that.
Oh, I'm not.
I'm just saying, I also hear from the other side.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, and, and again, and again, I don't mean any disrespect. You know, I don't know exactly how to fix it. I know that there's a lot of organizations doing a lot of different things. And, you know, the giving out of tents isn't a good thing. I think we have programs that are in place that are set up that if we can channel the homeless through those programs, through those organizations, we're going to see more success rates if we can get them in there. And
I just know when I talked to David Biddle, is that the name?
Yes, yes.
Brittle. Uh, he made the comment that one thing that really was negative, if I understood him correctly, is that every organization doesn't track that.
Right.
And they do. I mean, he was showing me how they go about that and there's got to be some accountability there. And he was just explaining to me that if we did that in every organization,
Right.
we could figure out who was just
Right.
manipulating the system. So that's why my very first question was, do you track any of this?
We do that. We do that with our transitional programs. You know, our transitional programs, Brandon and Rodney and the other ones, we keep track of where those guys are going. Because you'll see one guy that works the system and then he'll go over and try to work the system. And so we try to keep those avenues or those, those communication avenues open so that we can tell a guy, hey, enough's enough. You're not going to get away with this no more. You break these rules, you break all the rules. And so it really puts them kind of in check from abusing the system. And again, our shelter was only designed for a temporary relief for people didn't die on the streets. We were never meant to be a full-time homeless shelter. Um, because we don't have the manpower, the funding or anything to run like that, our ministry is designed differently. And so, you know, again, I'm here and if you guys think that the season for the Mercy House needs to end because it's causing issues, hey, we're willing to work with you on that. And, and we're willing to talk through that. And, and we're willing to, again, do what we can do to help those downtown businesses. Because I don't want anyone not to come to the downtown area because that's something that's going on that's bad.
Well, and, um, over the next couple of weeks, uh, I've already started putting a group together on this. I'd love you to be a part of that.
Absolutely.
You know, we're putting a group together because we don't know the answer.
Right.
You know, I'd love to sit up here, we'd like, like Gerald said, well, go, man, if we had an ordinance, we'd do it. But we did, we just don't know what to do on it, but we can't do nothing.
Right.
And, uh, and I just worry that sometimes the things that we do just bring in more and more and more. So I, I, I just think we've got to take a hard look at that. And I'm not advocating either way, but at some point, you've got to look and say, hey, is this, is this making the system better? Or is it making it worse?
Absolutely.
And I don't, I don't know the answer.
Right.
Well, I'd like to chime in on this, give a little bit of insight on what I've learned from being amongst those in the homeless community. A lot of it is mental health issues and drug abuse and all that. But talking to some of them, um, a lot of them get here through the railroad. They come from Kansas City, Chicago, and as the climate gets colder, and if you remember back in the summertime, there was like a tent city right there behind the old railroad station. I mean, it was just tents everywhere. They were far enough south to where you couldn't see them off of Orange County Garrett. But if you kept going, you would see them and tents were just lined up. And that's where they stayed. So now that it's beginning to get, get colder, they're moving south where the weather is a little bit warmer. And then once it, you know, gets a little warmer, they're transitioning back up north. You know, and, and also the cost of living is a lot better here than it is in many bigger metropolitan cities. But I've asked them, where, where did you come from? How, how did you get here? Oh, man, I just caught the, the, the train.
Right.
That happens. People still jump on the train.
Oh, yeah.
And they get, you know, and they build communities. And we can't get rid of you because we need people that they trust and have rapport with and have established a relationship with. And, and Mayor, I totally agree with you. And I'm willing to be on that board. I don't know the answers, but I'm willing to serve.
For 10 bucks?
Hey, no, I'm kidding.
Absolutely. We'll take all the help we can get.
Yeah, no, I mean, we work together, so.
Yeah. So, okay. Jeremiah, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, yeah, reach out to me.
And we do appreciate everything you're doing. It's just, we got to figure it out.
Absolutely.
Right? Because it's got to be fair to everybody.
Right. I mean, I'm shocked at the numbers. I mean, to be honest, it surprised me. Seven people from what we're running, it just seems like, where'd they all go? And so, um, I'm willing to do what I can do to help, okay?
Okay. Where it's warmer.
Right, yeah, exactly. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 3.4, discuss the city's rating on the Insurance Services Office Public, uh, Public Protection Classification Program. That's the ISO program.
Good evening. It's a long title, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, we're going to talk about the exciting world of ISO reviews. Uh, not that exciting, but it is very important. Um, so what they do is the Insurance Services Office is an independent organization. They come into a community and they do a very thorough study of the fire department and all the services they're able to provide, uh, deliver protection they can provide to the community. And so by doing that, uh, they can assess your risk and give you a grade. Uh, typically this occurs every three to five years. So they collect and analyze a, a large amount of data from the fire department, mostly. Uh, we also utilize information from the water department, uh, and other resources that the city helps us with. And they assign us a grade at the end of that, uh, and in their system, a class one is the highest rating and a class 10 is the lowest rating. The main categories that they study, uh, one is needed fire flows. So they go through your community and they pick out specific key structures in the community to determine the amount of water it takes to put that building out if it were to catch on fire. Uh, the next major category is emergency communications. This includes, uh, the emergency reporting, which is our more, uh, uh, reporting software that we use that collects all the data from all the runs that we do throughout the year and adds it to the national database. Uh, it includes the telecommunicators, which are the dispatchers, how many we have, the hours they work, the training levels that they have, uh, the continued education that they do. And then it also includes the dispatching systems. Uh, ours is called Z-tron System and it's basically how we notify fire crews to respond to certain addresses. Uh, the tones go off, lights go off and it gives us addresses, things like that. The third major category is the fire department itself. And in this part, portion of the review, it is a fine-tooth comb, uh, evaluation of the entire department. Um, down to every tool that's on every truck. They analyze our staffing levels, how many people we have, uh, their training levels, things like that, uh, all of our training records. And so again, when you're compiling all this data over a three to five-year period, you're talking about a lot of document, a lot of documentation. It takes our staff of about six people several weeks to compile all this information. So it's, it's very thorough. Uh, it also studies the geographic distribution of your fire stations, are they placed well throughout your community for optimum response times? Uh, it takes into consideration your operational considerations and your community risk reduction, your fire safety plans and training and things like that. And then the last major category is water supply. So this includes all the inspection and flow testing of all the hydrants, which we do every year. Alternative water supply operations, which is tanker shuttle operations. If we don't have hydrants in area, how do we get water there? Large trucks, big hoses and a lot of help from our neighbors. Uh, we also take into consideration the careful evaluation, the amount of time of, this is one of those lengthy ones. Amount of available water compared to the amount needed to suppress fires up to 3,500 gallons. This is to say, it kind of ties back into the needed fire flows. How well is your water system designed? Does it provide you with the amount of water that you need to put out fires throughout your community? So in recent years, our last three reviews, here's our scores. In 2012, our score was a 74.6, which put us at a class three. In 2016, our score was an 82.5, which we moved up into the class two range. And this year, we remained at a class two, but our score did drop just slightly. And you can see the score percentages on the right-hand side there, the class score percentages. So when you get these ratings, that's all the data combined. They give it a percentage rating, they assign you a class. The important part of this is when they assign you a class, it is used, um, this is, this data is used by insurance companies to determine, uh, insurance rates for properties. And it does have, um, a fairly significant impact on residential properties, but it has more significant impact on commercial, uh, properties. So it's important that we try to be as, as diligent in this as we can and try to remain as high level as we can. So that class two is really important. And we'll touch on that a little bit more here in a minute. So the black and white graphs on the top are from 2012. The blue ones on the bottom are from this year. So you can see the trend. Uh, typically nationwide, uh, most departments throughout the country in 2012 were in the five and six range. Um, you know, through education and recognition of how important these ratings really are, fire departments became more proactive in, in trying to improve their ratings. And so you can see that below that, the nationwide scale, everybody did tend to gravitate a little bit towards the higher ranges. And then on the, on the right is the state of Oklahoma itself. Black and white on top, 2012, blue on bottom is this last year. Uh, so you can see a significant change in the last few years, just in the state of Oklahoma itself. Okay, so what has changed from our last review, uh, in 2016 to this current review? So you see the same basic categories again. Uh, the areas in red are the areas in which we dropped, lost some points. The areas in green, I'll touch on it here in just a second. So, um, as far as ones that we dropped in, emergency reporting, if you don't keep up with current softwares and equipment and techniques and strategies and tactics and all that stuff, that's where you start to fall behind. None of this stuff is cheap. So a lot of it is about trying to maintain a, you know, your budget to be strategic and movement and, and keeping up with the times. Emergency reporting, this specific, um, class, uh, deals with the software that we use for all the reporting of our incidents. And we are in the process of evaluating how to improve that right now. Uh, we are going to go later this week to actually demo, uh, some software to look at our options and try to make the best move there. The next one is dispatching systems. Uh, we're currently in the process of, uh, upgrading our dispatch, uh, systems right now. Touch on that in a minute as well. Uh, equipment, we've talked about our ladder truck many times over the years. Um, as it gets older, we start to lose points for that. And then down in water supply, hydrants. Um, over the last few years, we had a hard time kind of keeping up with our hydrants. At one point, we had over 40, uh, out-of-service hydrants. It was a combination of many issues. A lot of it was lack of materials and ability to get hydrants just to replace them when we were, when we were able to. The next one is alternative water supply operations. So as we went through our review material, we recognized that we were going to be dropping in several of the categories. So we looked for an area that we could quickly try to gain some points, to do our best to try to stay a class two city. Um, in doing that, we spent some extra time and effort in, uh, meeting some additional requirements that we've never really dealt with before. Uh, but the guys jumped in and helped out a lot. Uh, but most of it dealt with them going out and running drills and videoing what we could do, um, as far as supplying water with a tanker and a drop tank and our ability to provide water to areas that don't have fire hydrants. So, uh, I want to point that out because we, we gained enough points there that did, that is what kept us at a class two this year. So the guys really chipped in and made that happen. So same categories here again, looking down the road, what can we do to stay a class two? To, to improve our score, to get off the edge of that line with a class three. The yellow are the things that we're looking at long-term and the green are the ones that we are currently working on and should have a, a firm grasp on in the near future. So the emergency reporting, again, the software we're looking to and probably in the next budget cycle, start to, uh, uh, try to make some changes and improvements there. Telecommunicators and dispatch systems. So all three of these categories kind of tie together. Uh, and what PD and 911 Dispatch has been doing recently to upgrade their systems is going to help us dramatically because we're going to tie into those updated systems, um, which will bring all three of those areas up. Uh, there are some new state mandated, uh, training requirements for the dispatchers, so those scores can come up. Uh, we're currently in the process of rewriting some SOPs to update those. That'll help a little bit. And then dispatching systems, like I talked about, we're in the process of upgrading those. Long-term, equipment is expensive, so we're planning for, for making some improvements in those areas. Uh, staffing, um, those are some big projects that don't really, uh, make sense for a long time. So adding people is very expensive and it's not a drastic need, but some additions and changes in specific places can help there. In our training area, that is one thing that we started heavily changing about two years ago. And we made significant strides in those areas. And that is something that will definitely show up on our next review. Community risk reduction, that is going to be a long-term plan, uh, but we have some great ideas. The Fire Marshal's Division has already been working on some plans for that. Uh, we can easily gain some points in those areas. And then hydrants, um, that is an ongoing thing. And Michael and his bunch over the water department have been great in trying to help us keep up with that. Um, you know, they've got a lot, a lot of work to do. So it's, it's, it's a heavy task to put on them. Um, but he's come up some plans and really, and made some strides in those areas. So, so, uh, that's going to be a pretty good category for us in the future. So a brief look at where we stand, where we compare with everyone else. Our scores are the ones with the score on top. For example, on every bar here. Our scores are the ones with the score on top, for example, on every bar here. So that's where we rate. And if you look down here at the key, the solid line is our peer group. The peer group is similar size and type fire departments in similar similar-sized cities. So when you go back up and look at that, here's our peer group, slightly behind, but when you look at the numbers, we're not behind by much. And then the total value for each of these categories does vary significantly, so that's something to take a look at. But in all four of these major categories, we are right in the ballpark of our peer fire departments. When you come down and look at the small dots, small dotted lines and the large dotted lines, that's the state and national departments, the averages for fire departments, and we're well above the standard for state and national. So overall, our level of protection and all the things that were evaluated on are well above the average. So when you talk about all this and we're at a level two and, you know, a lot of people always ask, well, okay, you keep talking about a level two, why shouldn't we be a level one? It would be really nice to be a level one. First thing I'll point out is the significance between one step to the next is not a massive amount of money, okay? So when you talk about the average residential property, the difference in annual insurance cost from a class one to a class 10 might be about $1,000 a year. Okay, so that's that's a significant amount of money, but that's between very top and the very bottom. So the difference between one class level isn't all that significant. But you have to look at cost and reward, right? So when you talk about being a class one, getting a class one accreditation, they're very expensive because it requires extensive education levels for all of the staff officers, which are costly and difficult to maintain. And they're just not very typical of departments of our size. They're usually, when you start talking about accreditation, that is usually something that very large departments usually try to accomplish. Water systems, there's nothing cheap about improving water systems. And overall, there's not a lot of points to be gained in that area for the city unit, so we're doing really good in that area already. So it'd take a massive amount of money to make just the smallest improvements in that area. But then get back to what I was mentioning a while ago about additional personnel. If we tried to meet the NFPA standard of four personnel on every piece of apparatus, we'd have to add 18 total personnel. And that amount of cost for the benefit just doesn't pay out at this time. Someday, you know, as the city grows or footprint grows, we're going to have to add a station six and that's the best way to spend that money, not just adding additional people to the fire trucks that we have right now. As I mentioned before, the cost benefit between the class one and class two are pretty minimal. And typically, the departments that can achieve a class one rating are in metro areas. So most of those class A departments are right around Tulsa, right around Oklahoma City, and a lot of that is because of the amount of resources they can share with all of their neighbors to achieve those goals. Do you have any questions?
Chief, on the dispatching systems.
Yes.
Notice you also have the staffing too. Does that include the number of 911 dispatchers?
It includes, so you're talking about specifically the telecommunicators?
Yes. Commissioner Sarah Goose and I had a 911 county board this meeting and we are shorthanded by six 911 dispatchers for our county and major county. I imagine that's.
That is not uncommon.
We're able to stay class two.
Yeah. That is a constant challenge that the police department faces, the fire department faces, the dispatch department has faced those same challenges. The requirements to be able to be employed with those agencies are pretty high and the work can be stressful and hours aren't always great. That takes a different kind of person and those are just usually kind of hard to find. But they do take into account other factors, not just the number of them, but the training requirements, annual continued education credits, how they operate, which as I mentioned, we're upgrading their SOPs, the standard operating procedures, how they dispatch. And some of that comes from, all those things can tie into the the end result is, so their piece of the pie usually shows up in the call processing time. So when they say total response time, call processing time is when the phone is answered at 911 until they push a button to send a fire truck or a police car, okay? And so there's national standards for that. And if they can get it done within that time window, they get a certain score. If it's outside that time window because of lack of efficiencies with the systems or or training or whatever that might be, then you start to lose points. So there's a lot of different things for each of these categories. There's there's a lot of detail in each one.
Chief, on the emergency report inside Captain Miller's here and Captain, is the fire department going on the new system like the police department is as far as the reporting part of it too?
Are you talking about our new software?
Yes.
They're actually looking at their own software. The one that we currently have, I believe they're evaluating in also for their for the fires side. They're going to go through their software to see what would best fit there. And then we will try to integrate everything together, whatever they go with, we will try to integrate everything together.
That's what I was getting at is could it save you guys some money? Because we're looking at the same thing today with major county. Because they have a different system, but they want to go to the same one that we're have with our 911 system that they just have to do the interface. So I was wondering if our local fire department was thinking that way.
Right, right. So the simple version of it is you have reporting software. So they bought a software system called Central Square, okay? And that's where all of their data is kept and reporting is done and things like that. The communication portion of that is called the CAD system and that's where the data flows through and gets dumped into reports, you know, on-scene time, cleared scene time, responding time and all the all the technical data, that stuff travels through to end up on the reports. Central Square does not have a fire component, so right now we're on a product called Emergency Reporting. We're looking to see if that product is something we're going to stay with or if there's something better out there. But we know there's, emergency reporting is antiquated and it's dying on the vine and fixing to go away pretty quick. So we don't have a choice. We're going to have to move away from that, but we're trying to find the right software to move to. The first thing we did is we talked to Central Square because they're operating the CAD system that all that data goes through. And we said, what do you recommend? Who do you like working with? What should we take a look at? And they gave some recommendations and we're researching those and following through. That demo that we're going to see later this week is in Midwest City. They are currently operating the system we're looking at, so we're going to go talk to the people that are using it and know it and see if they like it or hate it. So we're doing our due diligence so next budget cycle, we can come to the table and educated and with the right information and have those discussions of what we need to do.
Well, thank you, Chief, for what you do. I will say, being in that insurance business, it what you do and those items on this list.
Yes, sir.
Affects so every single person in town. I sit there and I look at a few hundred dollars times 22, 23,000 homes. It's a huge amount of dollars for our community that we're able to save. So thank you for doing that and we appreciate that and it'd be great if we could get down to a one, but we'll see.
We have goals. We'll see how far we can get.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to point out one thing real quick. We have a great team that's working really hard and right now we have some residents on East Oklahoma Street that might have, you know, a few inconveniences, but we are replacing an entire water line all the way down Oklahoma. You guys have helped our engineering team and that's one of our projects. It's really helping with fire flows. I hope it helps with the score. I know we just completed the Leona Mitchell project.
I was going to say, it should help with the score since the highest majority of our red fire hydrants were on Oklahoma from the hospital on it.
We don't have them all updated yet, Commissioner, but I was talking with the Fire Marshal, Mike Schatz, and he was telling me one of those hydrants went from about 264 gallons a minute to 2,982 gallons a minute. So big jump. We're doing a lot of work in this community to make people safer and hopefully it's helping the numbers too.
Absolutely. And fortunately, we still have at least three years before the next one. So we'll be prepared and I'm sure everything will be just fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jason, I'm going to skip over you. I'll bring you back in two weeks, but I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to go to 3.6, discuss proposed updates to the city's finance procedure manual. And that's you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is going to be quite a bit shorter than last time we did an update. Since it's been one year since we've done an update, there are basically two things in state statute that have changed that we need to make some amendments to in our finance procedure manual to come in compliance with Oklahoma state statutes. And one of them is to do with the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act. And most of it is grammatical or definitional changes, but there's also a couple other changes we're going to go over. And then there was an Energy Discrimination Act in 2022 that was passed that also is going to have a couple of implications in our manual that we need to address. So on page 20 of the manual, there is a solicitation for services. One of the new forms that's going to be required as a result of the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act of 22 is a required boycott affidavit. As a political subdivision of the state, we are required to conform with this law. It says if we have any contracts where we're going to pay someone over $100,000 and that entity also has 10 or more full-time employees, that they have to basically sign as part of their contractor an affidavit that states that they will not boycott energy companies and they will not during the term of the contract. And so legal has drafted up that affidavit for us. It's been included in our bid packets, but we just need to put it into the manual so that it's a part of what has been included in state statute there. Section 3, Competitive Bidding Act, you can see each of the areas listed here. Most of them are grammatically aligning definitions and other things with state statutes. Specifically in section 3.4, 3.5 and 3.10, there's been updates to add the acceptance of electronic bids. That was something that was changed in this ordinance that had previously not been accepted. We are actually working on installing some new software or working with the company to be able to accept electronic bids. And so we need to go ahead and get that in there. So once we're ready to go live with that project, we'll be in compliance with state statute and what our manual says. There's a change also in 3.11. There's now a provision in the state statute that allows for extenuating circumstances forbid time length to be extended on mutually agreed upon terms between the bidders and the city. And that's an additional 120-day period that's allowed by state statute. And then the last one is a change in 3.14 to the amount of retainage. Previously, we could hold up to 10% retainers until 50% of the program was completed and then it had to drop down to five. Those amounts instead of 10 and five are now five and two and a half percent. And so that's just again to come in compliance. And then back on section six, there's one more addition and this is just to include that new affidavit for the electron or not electronic, but the Energy Elimination Act of 2022, just requiring that to be part of contracts that we execute when the amount we're going to pay the vendor is over $100,000. So those are the changes that we wish to incorporate. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but it's all to come in compliance with state statute and we would like to bring it back at the next meeting to adopt the new manual to include those provision changes.
Are there any questions or comments or? Thanks, Aaron. We appreciate that. Thank you. 6:19, we're going to go into adjourn and we will start our regular meeting at 6:30.